Item number two on the agenda is approval reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the meeting held may either. Should bring it out, but. Yeah, we can go.
I think, yes.
I didn't, I didn't remember that was an actual.
But it was.
No, that last one on the, on the. Last one to second debate. Was that what those parts were?
Looking at, was it to correct our loss?
Yes, that's where we, wasn't we?
I mean, is that what that was?
That's what it was.
I didn't remember that was. Item in the purchase order.
No.
And that's why I wondered. And that must have been made to repair that pump. And I'm, I'm gonna tie it to give her if that's correct. Mary, are you aware of that? Under that win?
That's real, is that?
On the. Technically signified electric. Uh, was that actually parts to repair the pump rodeo ring? Okay, that's what I thought here.
Yeah.
I didn't remember seeing it from one of these.
Right, okay, yeah, that's right, and, and that's why I know taken on there. It was approved to be house made, which all approved it by motion, so. And I didn't have P O repairs, it, it kind of each side, I didn't know it was coming. So I prepared that form for like what y'all.
And that's, and that's what I was trying to do is tie it to get it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Make a motion over. I have a motion. I'll say, and a second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Item number three, approval reject and consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held may twenty eight, three thousand. Special trooper? Do you have a motion?
I'll say.
And a second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Donna? Yes. Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes. Yes.
Item number four. Uh, we will take no action on having any new book of A T O C.
That's right.
So we'll take no action on. Item number five, approval reject public works purchase orders.
I saw one, item number zero five one, zero four nine. Ron's discount for pressure washer?
Yes.
What for? Heard about mine.
They started, they purchased that with the pool. They purchased, their immediate need was to power loss pool, but one that they had previously had broken.
So where's the pen in that agenda, are you able to?
I would. When he gave me that purchase order, he said to code it for water in the plant, so I.
That's what I saw, that's what I brought to the public works.
Right, that's how I coded it.
So it wasn't for the public works, why is it part of, why, why is it going to public works?
That would be a good question for me.
Where's he?
Basically, Donnie, we were gonna use that at the swimming pool, but I figured that it's gonna be a more useful item for public waters when we make water treatment and wastewater. Whereas the pool is a one time a year thing.
Mary, what, what other items we take down in public works? Water treatment?
Can you tell me what the vendor is for now, please?
Uh, I don't have the vendor number, but I got it to ask.
Will the vendor make please?
Uh, discount.
Okay, sure.
Did it come out of M and O?
Operating supplies, yes, water treatment plant.
Okay. Do we have anything out of M and O, else out of M and O for this month?
I'll break that to you, we have a whole slew of chemical expenses from Southwest Chemical, it's gonna be a lot easier to show you.
Well, that's the operating expenses, operating supplies, right?
Yes.
We have a list of those, Mary.
Right, see that? The reason I'm asking is if it is, if that's only out of M and O, we have seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in spare that took five.
I'm speaking specifically of operating supplies. And that is everything that's pending to post against that account, so that's to official on a purchase.
And we're good there.
Yes, yes.
But I was looking at.
Right, no, you, right, this is, the language is a little easy, but it's operating supplies, it's the title for them.
Okay, so you put the pressure washer or this also?
Yes, these would be all the items that I've highlighted, pending, yes, yes.
But it would be the way we're okay.
Yes.
Okay, then I, okay, none of operating.
Okay, I have a question for the board. On Southwest Chemicals. The invoice for two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. This is for the ferric sulfate. To cause all the problems. At the water plant. Do we feel like we should pay for this chemical?
And I wanna say here. Excuse me. I'm gonna say it's, the reason why. Because our engineer. Had talked about the need to change over from A C H. For the ferric sulfate. And. Apparently, Bob, if I'm incorrect, you correct me, please, Bob is here with Southwest Chemical. Correct me if I am incorrect in these statements. Apparently, our engineer consulted with a different. Chemical engineer. And did a jar test and said that it would work. And it didn't work, they filled up the tanks and we couldn't use ferric sulfate at that moment. So we reverted back to A C H as a temporary solution to figure out what we need to do. I understand that Bob here with Southwest Chemical, in no time did a jar test to tell us that it was good or not good. So it's not his responsibility for the chemical, it's not working. He didn't do the jar tests. If Dale did the jar test on somebody else, it's Dale's responsibility because the jar test didn't work like it should.
Are you, Mark, we spoke with my mom around the stairs.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know who, nobody was here. I thought you told me you made done a jar test, I thought I heard the opposite.
Oh, ma'am. The jar testing that I performed here was many years ago, I've been here supplier since nineteen ninety-nine chemicals. They recommended the ferric sulfate. To improve your T H N trihalomethane from your disinfection by products. Which is a superior product than A C H when it comes to removal of organics. So. There are other options, there's ferric chloride. And there's aluminum sulfate, just to hold out. But both of the ferric salts have proved. Very well as far as putting you in compliance on your T H Ns and your disinfection by products. I have several people that are on ferric sulfate. I have a number that are on the ferric chloride. Both of these iron salts, as we call them. Are very beneficial when it comes to removing organics. They're superior to the old polluters. Including A C H. A C H is fine as far as keeping your turbidity down. And it performs pretty well in low alkaline water, and you, you have very low alkalinity in your vessel. And that's why the caustic soda is required. To increase the alkalinity so that the coagulant will work or perform better. Problem in the tank was one of the reasons I'm down here. The only way that that could have occurred. Is if the A C H came in direct contact with the ferric sulfate. They are incompatible. I've mentioned this to your plant manager, Keith here, who can verify this. That you can't mix A C H and ferric sulfate without catastrophic results. Where you're gonna have heat generated and you're gonna have the mess that you have in the tank now. Mr. Burke and I had talked about this. He informed me today that that slug is still viscous. So there might be a possibility. I don't know how, I, I don't wanna stick my neck out because I can't guarantee this, but. Possibly that tank can be salvaged. If it sets up like this floor or like concrete, you're gonna have to scrap that tank. So I don't know what took place. I just know that. The A C H and the ferric, I mentioned this several times, are incompatible. You can't mix fluorides and sulfates. Without a reaction and without. A very difficult salt. To vomit salt.
When was the last time you talked to Dale about this?
Today.
Tonight?
I thought he was coming down here for a time, I don't know. I don't work for, for his company.
Brian.
But I'm very familiar with Dale, and we had worked on some projects. Just for County Water at Adams. And we did do a jar test to get it there. His daughters of Kenny, Sam and sweetie. And we performed in-depth study. There at Adams. And they're on ferric chloride. It's working very well. Long Town is on ferric sulfate. City of Stigler is on ferric sulfate. And I supplied him, he never had a problem. So I don't know what took place here, I wasn't present when all of this. Occurred.
It seems strange that we put one tote in and it didn't react until we got in the last tote. Is what I've been told. But then I've been told that all we had to do was rinse the tank, and they rinsed it three times. And that's what was recommended before they put it in.
If they, if they had diluted that product with a number of rinses, I was told, you wouldn't have had this.
And how many rinses did you recommend?
I, I, I just told them to rinse it thoroughly and get a vacuum truck to draw out. The part that was below that line, that pipe coming out of the bottom. A C H is heavier than water.
And did you tell this to Philip or to Dale?
Both.
Oh, because I've never heard about the vacuum truck for me those two days.
Well, how are we gonna, how are we gonna guarantee that there wasn't A C H? In that bottom foot if you didn't go ahead and take measures to flush it and then draw out residue down there? I think, I asked Dale one day, I said. What if the day tank drained back in? You mentioned that we put that first tote in, I didn't have it. Well, I don't know what took place, ma'am, I wasn't down here at the beginning of this, I wish I had it.
Wish it had been too.
The day tank, if it was full of A C H and it drained back into that main tank. That's when it happened, or could've.
Did you leave there at the time, did this was going on? I know why I was, I don't believe why it's here. Were you here at the time, Mary, was that Barrett?
No.
No.
So to answer your question, as Bob didn't everything to do with the jar test and changeover. I don't feel like Bob was liable for this, we can paint with the chemicals we ordered from him.
Did he make speak with Dale today besides Paul?
I did.
Why you down there?
We had talked about this, Ron, we talked about the tank and, and, and pulling it out, trying to salvage it.
I've just got, you know, being told that. About different ones and different stories. Different stories.
Resources.
Well, this is the only story you're hearing from me. Directly, I hope, I don't think I was, did I tell you anything different that might upset you?
I thought, and then maybe I just assumed, and then you and I talking about. That you had a jar test and it didn't show any reaction, that you told him to rinse it three times.
I don't. Philip asked me to take a thermal cup and put in the two products. So I just dumped it in, but that's not a test. There wasn't anything happen, I used a thermal cup because I figured it was gonna be heat.
Okay, so that's what I'm assuming with the jar test? That he should be mixing those two together?
That was, no, that wasn't a jar test at all, jar test is when you take your water and you dose it with the coagulants. And with anything to control the V H. And then you observe the flow. That's, that's jar test.
Is there anything we can do to get our cost of chemicals down, it's fifteen thousand dollars in some of this. That just seems very high to me.
Well.
I've never seen it, I know we have flooding.
I will go back and review the cost structure that I have here. The costs that I, my costs are based upon pumping off the chemical. And we have made numerous trips. Unscheduled trips. I got called at the house on Friday night, and I found a driver that still had hours. I sent him down here on Saturday. And I mentioned to Philip, I said, now that man's at twenty-four dollars an hour, because he's on top, he's past his sixty-hour limit. As far as D O T requirements. He's gonna be a time to act.
Well, we're getting into now, we're having like use of that small storage tank, so we can only hold so much at a time out there, then you get this flooding coming, we've just used a lot more than usual. And we have, we're putting and using it in a tank that's considered a day tank, which is almost supposed to walk for, last one day, because our bulk tank is unusable.
And I, and I think what you're saying too is that instead of doing it through the computer and getting exact measurements, we're doing it by hand, and have a measurement order from within.
Uh, it's still measured accurately through the same pump, but as far as just the access to that pump is, is through what they consider a day tank. That's the only tank that we have, and you know, and Bob's been bringing toilets, they call them, which are three hundred gallons or something. And then that, that day tank is about two hundred gallons, I think, so we're taking it out of those three hundred gallon tanks and putting in the two hundred and using it, but I mean, it's. Basically, we don't have any storage, so we're just having to get it from Bob and get as much out there as we can. And manually get it off of there and use it. So that's why we've been more.
And what you're probably saying is the totes are more expensive than the bulk.
The totes are definitely more expensive than the bulk, and you're only looking at approximately two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred gallons. We made two trips down here this week, including this, uh, a Saturday, which I told the secretary today, do not bill him for that. It wasn't totally dialing in his fault because the compressor failed and I had to make another trip. So it wasn't gonna be, we were here Saturday. As we pumped off the nasty into some more A C H. I'd like to see this thing resolve when you get over the ferric sulfate, which is what your, your city engineer, which you pay him to. I don't get any consulting fee from the city. So, you know, what I've contributed from my technical, like, I've been in this business since nineteen sixty-seven. And I had Tony's Chemical House and supplied the city here for many years. And then, uh, Central Garden Pet, which I sold that company, pulled out of the dumpster, I started that, Southwest Chemical. And I, I'm on your side here, you know? I've got a lot invested in the city of Tallahassee. And ma'am, I will review your thoughts and see if we can somehow, if we get over onto the bulk. I can assure you that your price will go down. They're very limited in space to deal with on that, on that one stretch of concrete. And we've had to come angle around with our pallet jacks to be able to get the A C H work, get it to pull it out.
We're basically feeding chemical, you know, just any way we can, it's not the way it's designed to work right now, so we get that bulk tank out of there. And, and get back to where we can handle that chemical and bulk, you know, we're, we're gonna be having added costs to it, just because that's not why we can.
Plus you're having more.
Dirty water, it has, it's a combination, but for sure, you know, he's having like more frequent trips and wheel, until we get that big tank out of there and, and get that clean.
Eva, now, you just told me they're gonna remove the tank?
I, I, for sure.
That's the discussion we're having right now, see about removing the tank, taking it out and breaking it down. And putting either Meratic acid or another chemical in there to start breaking down that gel. And see if we can get this.
I did talk to Mr. Burke about possibly putting an acid in there. Bear in mind that ferric sulfate is on the acid side, so you're dealing with acid against an acid. I, I don't know if that will work or not.
Do you have any testing abilities?
Pardon me?
Do you have any testing abilities that go out of the board?
Well, I'll go on, I'll, I'll contact some other people that are in this business building. To see if that tank can be salvaged anyway, if it's still viscous. There's a possibility. It's gonna be awful tough.
With two acids, that's what I'm worrying about, I'm saying gas coming off of that. Yeah.
That's why they have to get it out of the building.
It's got, yeah, that, that I would highly recommend, that it was.
Yes, I mean, it's not worth risking any of our employees' lives out there.
Not an employee's life, it'd be an engineer, Dale, Dylan, I hope.
When, when you, uh, the sulfate. If it decomposes, you can get sulfur dioxide, which is poisonous, and that's what becomes. You sometimes see that in your wastewater, there's hydrogen sulfide and sulfur dioxide floating on this wastewater drinking place. Break down sulfur dioxide acid. It kicked off, it can kick off sulfur dioxide, which is highly toxic. So having it out in the open, by all means, because then you've got ventilation. And in a closed building, you have very little space above that tank.
Right.
You're gonna have to take the roof off to get that tank out, looks like.
That's what Dale and I were talking about with A C H, it's. That didn't trust, give them, have Billy come down and look at it, see if we can get that out, get, get it out and look at it then. But can't really get in there and look at it now, I mean, it's can't get to it.
I tell you what, anytime you guys have, the city has need for my services, I do not charge one of my existing accounts for any of my engineering services. I've made sulfur dioxide systems that P D Q approves. Of course, you gotta be registered, I have. However, that would say, and I, what talent I have is available to you. I have worked with Dale, I think we, I think we can get along fine. I mentioned one project that we did work in depth on there in Adams. It's sort of kind of, we could get over Mark there, he's a superintendent, he wants some records.
Well, it's kinda handy if they ever run for council and get something we need.
Well, we're only an hour away from it. And I might also point out that the money you spend stays in Oklahoma. It's not going to Arkansas, it's not going to Minnesota or Texas. It stays in Oklahoma. Can I be excused now?
Thank you very much.
I left my card, it's eight hundred number on it, it's got my cell phone number on it. If you want to see it, you can call me anytime. This is a three six five, twenty four seven business.
Kind of like all of our businesses are, aren't they? Kind of like all of our businesses, is it a little bit of Europe or not?
Public utilities, you don't shut them off, I mean, it's ongoing. And we do make very few calls and deliveries, and we've done it here.
Thank you for coming in.
Well, I wanna thank you folks, really.
Nice to put it back in there.
I wasn't on the agenda, I can't, you know. It's brought down, we appreciate it, this time.
Appreciate you being here, go, go sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, be careful.
So, Donnie, item number five, purchase order. Special trooper? We have a motion. I'll second, and a second one. Any more discussion? Vote.
Donna? Yes. Donna?
Yes.
For?
Yes. Yes.
Item number six, public forum, do we have anybody here for the public forum decisions?
Well, I, I wasn't gonna speak during public works, but after hearing that conversation, I just want reassurance. As most of us do, that our water is not getting any of that sledge like in town, is it? It's not.
No, that tank has been totally bypassed.
Okay.
It's totally safe, that's what I was talking about, the day tank. And they're feeding it manually. It's actually a bucket per day, it's taking a lot more labor, the guys are on top of it. They have figured out a system to get every last drop of this A C H out of this tote, figuring about. Manually feeding it, so it's going to the plant exactly needs to be.
Okay, so there's no, lot.
They had two ways of feeding the chemicals in, from this.
Thanks for us.
I, I was squirming.
Yes, ma'am, I, I have a concern. A citizen had tripped on my sidewalk and it is sloping into the ditch, which is what caused the sidewalk to give way to give in. Um, it's been barricaded for, well, the city dug up the concrete and put a, a yellow tape. This is two months, two months and a week ago. The tape has been coming apart and I put it back up and it's now white instead of yellow. And I'm hoping that the city can re. And I'm hoping that the city can replace that concrete, it's only about six feet, oh, so I have sidewalked that. There are several dozen trips, dozens of trips per day that children, adults, whoever make, to friends, to work, to school, to wherever, and exercising, people walk by to exercise, and I wouldn't like them to trip again.
That's actually, we were waiting, we had so much rain and we're waiting on the ground to get through the drying, so it was on my list again, and now that it's, we've had a week of no rain, hopefully, almost no, probably, that it will dry out again. It's actually under the cow, but we're right there at budget time, but I think we can probably get enough squeezed out of our budget and we can get that fixed without having to wait till July. Thank you. Anybody else here for the public forum? Okay. Item number seven, attorney's report.
I don't have a good public report.
No attorney's report. Item number eight, discussion in action regarding sewer building for car washes. And this is on here, I had them put this on the green car wash town. Garrison.
It's what I say.
Hey, how's it meet you?
It's all good.
Well, did you like to?
Sure, I'll, just like you guys, everybody's trying to lower their costs in doing business and I've been the same. I've spoken in the area several times in here, but recently there's been a, we get a newspaper from our trade, so, for Washington National, been three studies done, two of them are national. One of them was done by the University of Pennsylvania, it was on four different sites, Austin, Phoenix, Orlando, Pennsylvania. Another one was done by Eastern Oregon State College, with a city engineer named Rob McKey who's published. And the third one was done, because of the first two, by the city engineer of West Valley, Utah, Mr. Frye, and that, those were all published also. The just, or the overall behind the study is, is that in a car wash that pays for water metered in and sewer rates based on the amount of water that's coming through the meter, there is a thirty to forty-five percent water that never gets to the sewer. So these studies, I identify three things. First of all, is the carryout, when the car wash, they're not dry when they leave, and so a lot of that, you know, goes out with the car and the sidewalk and this sort of thing. Second thing is the evaporation that bounces on the car and bounces on the wall and on the floor and this sort of thing. And the third thing was adensation, due to the pressure of the wash itself, one that you can see it just going like this. So long as we're sure, they will recommend to people that all themselves are the car washes go to the city councils that are on sewer rates based on the amount of water that you're using. And make them aware of this, that around twenty-five to forty-five percent is not actually getting to the sewer, so it's something that we're not using. And I just want to throw that out to the consideration and see if you guys would lower our rates by a certain percentage in order to control our cost of the business.
Keith.
Keith.
Keith. There it is. Thank you. Dr. Garrison, on the car wash, do you hear this, the statistics go? Okay, tell me how it works.
I know that the sewer rates are based upon the amount of water that you use, and I don't know if we were going to restructure that for a car wash, I mean, we just have to get to Mary and see how we're doing. I don't know, I don't know how, how do they charge a car wash? Is it typically a percentage of what you use, or how does that work? As far as your study that you're.
On your sewer, not on the water.
But I mean, how, the thing with it is, the city has to have some kind of structure as far as how they deal with, you know, vice upon, you know, just, you know, how would we go about determining how much water actually goes down the drain if we didn't just use the water metering?
So, I don't, I don't know answer to your question, what I'm telling you is that, you realize by getting down there, all the water that comes through that water meter does not go down through the sewer.
And it doesn't on the residential meter either, as far as, you know, if your water is large and instead of going down the sewer, it doesn't, you know, go in the sewer, but I don't hate no water by determining that.
And you're going to be asking people in the restaurants as well, I'm not doing a hundred percent hot water because I'm giving it out to drink. That's what I'd say.
I just feel like.
I just feel like.
So I don't know how we would determine, I mean, it has to be something, and I don't know, Mary's pretty good about all of the rights and stuff, so I don't know if she's aware of anything that.
Have you had dealings like this before?
You know, and people, I guess would give rights every once in a while, or had in the past, where someone had filled a swimming pool and it goes down the ditch instead of down the sewer or something like that, but I guess this question is about the car wash wastewater.
Right. Although some cities do offer a discount for watering or filling pools, this is not currently one that does. Typically, where a car wash, you could come into play, is what you see with the rate structure, there's three types of rate structures, there's a flat rate structure, there's graduated or accelerating rate structure, or decelerating, okay? Here, we have accelerated rate structure, of course, the more you use, the more you pay per thousand gallons. So for somebody who is in the business of car wash, of course, that is going to sting, okay? Some other towns may go exactly the opposite, they may say, well, we've got big industry, we want to do this, that, and the other to promote, so we're going to offer a discount. Really what the trend is in the industry these days is to have the rate structure that you guys do, the accelerated rate structure, because the emphasis now is on conservation. Now, I know that doesn't address Mr. Dr. Garrison's question as far as, or Keith, is it possible, if you guys want to give a special rate, of course I can pull it off with billing, that's not a problem. You're never going to determine exactly how much he puts down the drain, sewer meters or not, anything that you can practically speak and use. So it's up to you guys to determine if you want to consider his studies valid, if you want to look into it more, but if you vote it, I can make it happen on the billing side.
Thank you. Very nice.
No, I guess I would, since this is the first I've heard of this, I think I'd feel uncomfortable tonight, I think we need to research it, and if you want to make copies or make available your reports, we should, we'd all be glad to review that. But I think we need to, if we're going to look at car washing, I think we need to look at all the industry thing, whatever.
Water.
Yeah, because.
Yours.
You are right. I was just making a care of yours ago, mine does not go down the sewer at all. Yeah, the water, the plants go. That was before I went on council, I was upset, that was a long, long time ago.
So what the council would like to do is to maybe get some.
I tell you what, go further.
So we can. Do you have some information you might want to add?
More information, I should.
Okay. But Dr. Garrison, like I said, thank you for bringing in the automated car wash, I love that. She can make hockey stuff. Thank you, Dr. Garrison.
Appreciate it.
Item number nine, discussion in action regarding illegal dumping at the town sewer lagoons. There's a lot of people think that behind the sewer lagoons, once you cross the bridge and take a left there, I mean, they dump everything back there. And we have a, you know, the.
Lowland County.
Lowland County, yes. And so I'm not sure what the, we've had this before on the agenda, I'm not sure what the answer is, we lock the gates, they still get, pass the gates. But it's becoming just a.
Well, I think some of our employees have been trying to be very comprehensive to the community, we had a, Limsdown here last time, I asked for the lagoon gate, so I put it in, it was helping me well, lots of people might need to be dumping branches and things, this is a courtesy, we can do this. So it's trying to be nice, but I think it's got out of control.
It's got so much trash, it's.
Yes. Catches there, so I just think it's got to be too big of an issue out there, especially with our low amount of employees that we have right now. I think the best policy is just close it, keep the gate locked, as we discussed before, and just stop having out there. We just need to, pass it to the department.
Keith. So I make a motion to stop all dumping at the town, at the town's sewer lagoons. You have a motion and a second?
Could I, I meant to say all the free dumping, where that's in case they don't find without human waste.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Done.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Yes. Item number ten is not on here the way I, I meant for us to go overall commission duties for all members, do you want to?
We can table it.
Table that one, okay. So now actually. Item number eleven, discussion in action regarding board member protocol.
I brought this up specifically for last meeting, save the need for us to find ways to protect ourselves in a different way.
Sorry, I think you gave us something I'm engineering in for. City of Duncan, try to get things out of your.
Yeah, I got a few for the audience if you want some. I'd like for us to go over this and see what we think about it real quick. This is from the city of Duncan, Little Village, out of their city. This actually came from a mail, and it talks about conduct of board member accountability. And it said, I'll start reading it real quick, we'll stop at each one, it's going to say what the board, thanks for reading it. Continue with this town Talahina's commitment to the absence of effective funding of democratic government, therefore requires that public officials both elected and appointed comply with both letter and spirit of laws and policies affecting the operations of government. Public official be independent and impartial and bear in their judgment and actions. Public office is used for the public good, not for personal gain, and public deliberations and processes be conducted openly unless legally confidential in an atmosphere of respect and civility. To this end, the town Talahina has adopted a code of ethics for members of the board trustees to assure public confidence in the integrity of local government and its effective and fair operation. The first item is recognizing that stewardship of the public interest must be their primary concern. Members will work for the common good of the people of Talahina and not for any private or personal interest, and they will assure fair legal treatment of all persons, claims, and transactions coming before the town and board trustees.
You do understand this hasn't been.
Hasn't been adopted, did you think that?
It's just putting.
That I'm suggesting that we look at and, and if we want to adopt these, we put it on next month's agenda and act it out.
Shouldn't this be under the city?
It's not, it's not under vote, the word public, I mean, like I say, public works for work, if you want me to say it. But it actually has to affect public works?
Yes, sure.
It's called under, for public works.
Could we read this one around and put this on the next meeting?
Okay. So, I mean, is it good that?
Right, because essentially, you have a lab there that you can look at and look at it, you also.
But we need to.
There's a bit of air too, or trying something.
If you look at the very last page, I'll read that. And it says, as a member of, I'm in public works for, for trustees, I read out public code of ethics that we recognize. Help create an atmosphere of respect and civility where individual members, city staff, and the public are free to express their ideas and work to their full potential. Conduct my personal and public affair with honesty, integrity, fairness, and respect for others. Respect the dignity and privacy of individuals and organizations. Keep the common good as my highest purpose, and focus on achieving constructive solutions for the public benefit. Value my vote and vote with my constituency and my conscience in mind. If there are conflicting goals, I will vote for the higher purpose. If I have a conflict of interest, I will stay in the moment. Avoid discouraged conduct, which is divisive or harmful to the best interest of the town of Talahina. Treat all people to my common contact in the way I wish to be treated. And represent and work for the common good of the town and not for any private interest. And I've heard that I've read, it's down the town Talahina's code of ethics, we sign. So I think we need to look at this, and if you all want to read it on your own, read it at that next meeting, we can put it on next meetings, but I'd like for us to have it ready to go so we can look at it at that point and vote.
It might be a good idea to add to that, also how we get that for me. We talked about having a side end, work for government, how to laugh, and that, maybe we can.
Ma'am?
Um.
Ma'am, yes ma'am?
Yes ma'am, sir, sorry.
That sounds like a match-up of all of us to me.
Code of ethics. It will be a lot of repeat, but we can do that. Thank you. Item number, well, discussion in action regarding fire extinguisher maintenance.
Well, if you want, if you want, we're putting it on next month's agenda?
Yes, I told you John, he's got it. Discussion in action regarding fire extinguisher maintenance, we've got to get something done, did you do anything on it?
Yes, I did, I got that one bid that we have.
Yes.
We can compare it with the one that Sherri gave me. And I talked to Dan at the Sherri, who does a lot of stuff here in town. I'll let you look at this and I'll tell you what Sherri says, and you can tell them. For, for recharge for a two and a half pound is eleven seventy-five, for a five pound is eighteen seventy-five, for a ten pound is twenty seventy-five, for a twenty pound is twenty-six seventy-five. And he says powder is two dollars a pound, and then he does a six-year maintenance sticker for six dollars.
So six dollars sticker for each, hard to. Hard to reach.
Do you have anything on their testing and recharge?
Well, the charging, that's what he does, testing when it comes in and tests them. That's the basic testing, it needs to recharge, it just comes in and tested and punches it as though it's first price I gave you. If it needs powder, he puts the battery at two dollars a pound, and then the six-year maintenance is six dollars and includes a sticker. And he said, we needed new ones, a new one, the two and a half pound is fifty dollars, a five pound is sixty-five dollars, a ten pound is ninety-five, and a twenty pound is a hundred and seventy-four.
Okay, so, for a. My place checks, assuming, I don't know about the pad, but you can use the powder. Surely if there's, if it's a ten pound, A B C, does that require any powder, or is that just a recharge?
I don't pretty much have powder in my tank.
Pretty much, because of all the.
It just depends on what chemical, does it present that power? It could be A D C or K or different, not have different apparatus, but does it make different?
I guess I have to compare, try to compare how this code is and what a Sherri is, okay, I can compare ten pounds of ten pounds and adding the six dollar sticker price, but what I don't know is how much powder is going to go into a ten pound, is that going to be?
It depends on what it means.
Yes, although we got high.
And he suggests if it needs two pounds, he's going to put two pounds in the water bottle.
Okay, so the top half, top weight, it could be ten pounds.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I know, I mean, he probably got a problem with your sticker.
So we have three, uh, ten pound A B C, the six-year service and recharge.
How much, how much do you have with, uh, ten pound stickers?
Forty-eight fifty. They're wanting to be recharged when I just said.
How does it say?
Forty-eight fifty each, and then forty-five. And recharge.
Okay, if they don't need recharge.
And at three of them, it's forty-eight fifty apiece.
Yeah, I think about doing it for ninety-five.
Right.
All I'm saying, I, I, I do the shirt and, uh, I've never been informed with them, they come every year. Check your, uh, so that's, it's a bit high, I think.
This, yeah, try to see what we're using now. So the six-year service and recharge is at forty-eight fifty. And so they're gonna put in, to look at Assured, forty dollars and seventy-five cents, six dollars with a sticker. And we don't know how much powder it's gonna take.
What amount should I take you back?
If it hasn't been used, I would think, I have to, have to run it, have to count it for you, okay? So then if.
And that's the firm health arts.
He does that.
You know, that's, that's, they have to be a police.
So that's Assured. Right, we use Assured. So this comes in.
I don't know if we had built a shirt that you're, when you compared it, I think we had a shirt. Uh, our buddy did, there were plenty of them.
Do we have, uh, can we abort the contract of what this is stated, it doesn't say what company we're using, it just says discussion and action regarding fire extinguisher maintenance. And basically what we're doing is recording the contract.
Point, very much.
Right.
This is all less than that, it's getting good.
So Donnie made a motion for us to.
The future.
Use a shirt for our fire, signature maintenance. We have a motion. I second that motion, any more discussion? Vote.
Donna, yes, Donna? Ronan?
Yes, yes. Item number thirteen, approve or reject entry into executive session consistent with type twenty-five, Oklahoma State statutes three oh seven B one, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary, public officer, or employee. Mary, ten minutes.
Make a motion.
We have a motion?
I see.
And a second, any more discussion?
You say it out, say it out. Have a vote.
Vote.
Donna, yes, Donna? Ronan?
Yes.
Jim?
I understand. Item number fourteen, approve or reject entry from executive session?
Maybe a motion.
Have a motion, second, second, any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Donna? Yes, Donna?
Yes.
Ronan?
Yes. I understand. Item number fifteen, action of the beginning from executive session? Okay, uh, what we have decided, and I talked with Mary about, is that she's going to work home on payroll, purchase orders, reconcile the books from coming from this office to hers, uh, work on the budget, and when those things are done, she will use the rest of her time working on the audits. Uh, she will come out and address the board with whatever questions that we might have. Okay.
And, and, uh, um, just wanna do a brief, uh, date on correct.
Yeah, okay, don't come on, it's nothing.
Nothing.
So we have a motion. That's not a, not a motion, not a motion.
Like, what we have in a minute, yeah.
Yeah, that, that goes. Item number sixteen, do you get what I'm saying?
Take, take now, forever, please. Well, the cats are out back, so, um, and I, I think we just disclosed a personnel issue that probably shouldn't have gone into our personnel files. Most of it, uh, I'm, I'm, that we go about it now, it's, it's been said. So, uh, we're not gonna make the motion coming out of the executive session, it has to do with police stuff. We probably need to just make a motion to the personnel file. Okay? Does it, does it, at what level does that go? I'm sorry, what level does that stop? The level does it stop? Yeah, like we came out and terminated somebody.
Oh, he can do that, but you do it for the good of the service. Yeah, you can terminate, it's, it's, uh, that's not the form any time, discipline. So, it falls in that.
My determination would be more of a discipline action than it is.
But this is, we didn't mean this is a discipline, we just wanted to define.
As an administrative.
Job description.
I know, um, I'm gonna ask that in the future, if you don't have something to vote on, when it's an employee related thing on executive session, if you guys come in back there and just make sure that it's something we need to be talking about in a little meeting as opposed to something that needs to stay in personal stuff, just gonna ask that, just, okay?
It's a good, there's nothing we do about it now, it's been said, and it's, it's out there, it's gonna go in a minute, nothing we can do about it now. But in the future, just, you know, cause they think there's, while they are calling employees, there are certain levels of privacy that they, they still do have respectively, depending on their status.
So you don't, you have an opportunity then to leave anybody's, uh, position description with regards to their duties and responsibilities ever? I thought that was kinda.
The first thing, and it's more of a, this for a job description.
Yeah, that would be, that would fall in job descriptions, yeah.
I mean, if they got their damn part time, so they have to, they're seeing what matters, the disciplinary, but it's just a whole.
Right, the, the purpose of, of the executive session is to deal with disciplinary issues, to deal with firing, firing, termination. Right, right, that's, that's, I mean, if, if, if we just wanna have a discussion with Mary about, hey, this, this is what your job responsibilities are, and whoever is in over the office, you probably, if y'all wanna get together and talk about it, that's fine. But then whoever's over the office, you probably go and tell her, and if y'all wanna public what the job description is in the written form.
You said we could've done it all out there, Neil.
No, I'm saying.
I mean, with job description stuff, I mean, and it didn't have to go into executive session, you're saying you need to, and if, if really getting together and talking about it in a public meeting.
Right.
And so, the board has, the board has some discussion to find agreement on what to discuss.
Sure, so if you wanna put it on the agenda to further delineate what our job responsibilities are, then that's fine, and yes, you can talk about it in executive session, but you can talk about it in a meeting. But what she talked about is put on as an executive session issue. So I think, I think technically, yeah, I think y'all probably shouldn't have gone back to executive session on it. If you just wanna delineate what our job responsibilities are, then you could've, you could've done that out here.
Um, I have another question, with the, um, her being a relative, does, does Gina have to step out for that conversation or?
Not step out, she can't vote on it.
She can't vote on it?
So if they're gonna vote, like, for instance, if, if they're, if they're wanting to put on you to change in their job responsibilities and duties, if they wanna take things off of her or put things on her, and they wanna do it in the form of, of a meeting.
Right.
Which you don't have to necessarily do, if that's the way you wanna do it, then Gina doesn't need to vote on it.
Okay.
Now, so don't call me. Item number seventeen, or is there anything on your business?
Uh, do you want her to, well, if you can, I'll give a brief update on where she's at, we'll be honest.
Yeah. Uh, well, yeah, I guess that.
It's, um, we're in a business.
Yeah, we do this.
Yes, we can do that, we can do it, we can do it, it's, it's good.
Okay. Okay, item number seventeen, board member comments? Anybody happy? Okay, item number eighteen, can you mind if I turn, have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote.